All right, ladies and gentlemen, we've got seven, uh, six o'clock. I'll call this meeting to order. Uh, first, and one thing I want to say, if anybody's here to speak to the public comment, period, you need to sign in up here if you will. I don't know if anybody's here. That's not the public hearing, it's a public comment, anything you want to bring before the board. So, first order of business, pledge of allegiance, Vice Mayor Barbara McFray.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I will say that Councilmember Lewis is not with us, but he is going to be calling in. I don't know if he's there yet or not, but...
I can hear you.
Okay, Mike, we got you. Thank you, man. Hope you get back on the road here.
Thank you.
All right, the other order of business is adopting tonight's agenda as presented, and there is an item from the streets of Franklin regarding a street closure that needs to be added to the agenda as eight D. D is in Delta. And so I'll ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on to approval of the agenda, that item nine A under legal discussion of proposed lease, we've had discussions with that party and have not been able to come to favorable terms despite good faith effort. So I would say just to strike that from the agenda for tonight.
All right, does that need any kind of motion, anything?
Just along with your approval of the motion.
Okay. All right, so we'll add the street closing request as eight D.
And Mr. Mayor, so I got one other thing.
Yes, sir.
For nine, eight A there, let me substitute instead one twenty-five Dearman Terrace. And I will, it's a potential legal action.
What do you want that, under your legal?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we got it. Okay, entertain a motion to adopt as amended.
I'm opposed.
Second.
I get it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good job, Mike.
Raise your hand, Mike, we can't see it.
Hi, Mike.
I'm assuming that's okay, the affirmative, since I can't see anything.
Yes.
Good job, Mike.
Okay, all right, the next item is the approval of the consent agenda. We have two items, approval of the September the eighth town council meetings. I guess everybody's had an opportunity to see those, and there's one budget amendment.
Move to approve.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Setser, you're up, sir. We have a public hearing for the rezoning petition for six six eight Dattle Mountain Road.
I'm the new mayor of town council. Um, yes, for you tonight is having a public hearing on six sixty-eight Dattle Mountain Road. Let me get my page here. This board forwarded that to the planning board, and the plan board met at their July meeting, and then voted recommending this rezoning, and then we set this hearing in our last meeting for tonight. But a quick overview of it, the property is six sixty-eight Dattle Mountain Road, it's thirty-three point four-two acres, it is currently in the ETJ, it is currently zoned R1 for residential. The applicants, Mary and Margot Porter, they are the, they're sisters of this family that has, own this property, it's their father. They're asking to have it just rezoned, and they didn't give any reason, explicit reasons why, just asked to have it rezoned, because of the vicinity of it being next to the Walmart property and next to the highway. But it's in your package, you'll see the aerial photo of it, and the current zoning, you can see where it's highlighted, with blue and yellow where it's showing it's R1 and it's bordering to the north, the Walmart property. And then you can also, in your packet, see the future land use map. Now, this is the first rezoning we've done since we updated our comprehensive plan, and you can see in the, on the future land use map that come with the comprehensive plan, it was recommended that it stay open space residential, which, but there was some gray area in the comp plan, when we were going through our comp plan, it wasn't, you know, there's nothing set in stone that you have to stay with that. It does border, it does border commercial, and if you decide to make this change to commercial tonight, since we will update the comprehensive map as well, to show that change as well, it would then change to the commercial drawing, as you see, it's touching in the orange there. And then you'll find the staff report, just goes over that, you know, it borders Dattle Mountain Road, there is, there is no water and sewer to the site, but it is, you know, relatively close to somebody, there'd have to be some extensions to get to it. And then you will see the recommendations from the planning board and the consistency statement for your, for you to look over tonight as well. Any questions on, for me about the rezoning?
Yeah, I'm just curious why the comp plan, why you looked at it as being veteran residential. I mean, it looks to me like a good commercial place, but for the reasons why?
Uh, I don't think there was really any individual reason why it was, we went through the comp plan, you know, we didn't get fine detail and look at every single parcel, but they did, you know, the consultants when we were going through it, or, you know, if you see something that's in there and as things change, it's kind of give you a guidance, you know, if you saw something that was not bordering in any commercial whatsoever, then you decided to see it changed, then that may be something you really want to look a little bit more close at. But with the vicinity of the highway, planning board didn't see this as any issue of this change.
Thanks.
I think you're going to find that there are much clearer cases that come along when somebody wants a use in an area that the council has said this is going to be more residential in character, and they think a commercial use needs to be right there. Where you're right on a border from a very intensive commercial use to say this could maybe also go along with that, that's, you know, going to be the ones that you shouldn't feel overruled by your lady's plan.
I thought maybe I was missing something.
Is it safe to say the consultants didn't scrutinize every single little tiny minute acre when they did this comprehensive plan? Would that be fair to say?
Yeah, it's a, it's an overview, it's kind of a best guess, you know, I mean, and some things come up, yeah.
Yeah.
And I won't just go over that, whenever you're doing a rezoning, something like this, I don't think there's any plans for the property in the near future, hasn't even been addressed to me, but when you're doing a rezoning, you look at everything that's allowed in that zone for C2, so you're going to get everything C2 and C1 related, all those uses are allowed here, and so if you're okay with those, any of those that it might be, which C2 is pretty much minus, everything minus C3 and industrial, so you're pretty much, industrial uses minus car dealerships is what you can have at this site.
There is one person signed up to speak, Mr. Hicks, Mr. Justin Hicks.
Thank you for your coverage of my concerns, Justin.
Oh, okay.
I'm just more concerned with what I'm going to be looking at when I pull out of my driveway. I mentioned it to you on the phone, and I'd love to see some kind of a buffer, if it's possible, I don't know what y'all can do and can't do, but some kind of a buffer so that I don't have to look out my bedroom window at the backside of another store. It's my opinion as a citizen, there's plenty of retail spaces they could use elsewhere as opposed to the front yard, but I just wanted to kind of hear what you said.
And honestly, we don't have any, there's no plans, we need it a bit, if something does in the future side of the fight and develop it, we have procedures built into our UDO that allow buffers, and we could require some screening and some, planting some trees or something for places if neighbors wish to do so, or wish, you know, have something to that effect, so they don't hurt their, their views or anything.
Did that...
Can I ask a real quick question?
Sure.
Landowner up the road, my name is Donnie Holden, my mother's property borders the edge of where this commercial property be taking in hand if it comes into fruition. Will the ETJ be expanded if this happens, or will it stay the same?
There's, there's currently no plan to expand ETJ, you know, it's just, this was one of the, I think this might be the last piece, I think, I think there's no peace passage.
Yeah, it's right there up against it. One other thing, if this does come into fruition again, the city limits, will they be pushed out past the rock cut at their, at their media school?
I don't know of any plans to do anything like that. Town doesn't have capability to do any involuntary annexation, it would have to be voluntary if the town decided to annex anything in the future, so I don't see of any plans or any discussion of this annexing.
All right, that's all I'm aware of.
Justin, could I add one thing?
Yes, sir.
Please, thank you. John's the attorney for the family.
Yeah, I'm John, and I'm the attorney for the landowners, and it's actually the surviving widow and his daughter, that each owner of the property is tenants in common, they have half interest each. They brought, one thing I just want to orientate you all on the map about, and it may, I can say black for better term, make you feel better with this, and Justin's done a great job kind of illustrating this. To the north on this property, you have C2 special use with the Walmart. Surrounding it, if you really go from twelve o'clock, really all the way down to six o'clock, almost, it is already all C2 commercial property, a zone. There is a small piece of property right there at about the seven o'clock position, if you looked on the map, that is residential, and those are all fair comments coming from the public. That said, I believe you all do have the abilities and the capabilities to set in buffers and things like that in the future. To the south, you're basically, and to the east, south-southeast, you're bordered by the school, but one thing is of interest right through that area there, is there is a large, I'm going to say, terrain feature, because it is significantly steep right through there, that acts as a natural barrier between anything that would be placed in there and the school area itself. So really, you've got somewhat of a, I'm going to say an island, but it kind of lends itself to plateauing up to the area where all the commercial, if this was on commercial, all other commercial activities take in place. So I personally, obviously I'm biased because I represent my client, but I think it's a good move in that it's, it's basically already commercial used anyway, just this area is just not used yet. And it's obviously, it's got some good acreage, I think the main part that would be used is probably going to be the northwestern sector on that because of its flatness, and it also has a pond there, which lends itself to construction on a commercial setting anyway, for sedimentary control purposes. Could be a great place for, you know, who knows what the future holds, but I'm not, I'm just throwing out ideas, but something like a Home Depot or something like that that could enhance the area, but obviously, you know, not, not an industrial setting. But in other words, I guess what I'm saying is what we're asking the council to lift this up to is totally in character of the rest of that area as it's plateaued, and I'd put forth it's for the best use of the property, and I think it would, in the future, also increase the tax value somewhat significantly. So, thank you for your time. Any questions of me whatsoever, I can answer.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, did that answer y'all's questions, too?
A question to stem off of yours.
Yes, sir. And this may not, can be done, I don't know.
Would it be reasonable for your client and for the town? He's talking about this, if I understood his direction, it's probably just this front side being good for commercial and this back side being too steep, is that barrier you mentioned? Would it be uncalled for to split the property and keep the back half residential and...
Well, obviously, it's not a decision for me to make.
Is that unreasonable for your client, I guess is the question to you?
Well, I don't think, I think it's a question, and Mr. Henny can jump in any second, but it's a question opposed to them that if a plan, if their zoning is shifted, then a plan comes in to develop it, I'm certain the council and the planning board will need to look at that development and put in the appropriate barriers they saw fit to keep the character and your concerns and address those appropriately.
I think...
John, I don't want to step on your toes there.
And I think, Mr. Mayor and Council, I think that the, what Justin addressed earlier about buffering between uses is featured very heavily in your UDO and will remain so, so that if you have a, a commercial use that is in the vicinity of a residential area, has a larger buffer requirement than it would next to another commercial feature, if that makes sense. So, the UDO is sensitive to the idea that you have, you know, if you have less compatible uses somewhere where they might see, you know, be able to see a commercial property impacted by it somehow, that a buffer is built in. I, I think as to splitting it, we have avoided, and though it's certainly not illegal for you to decide to, to have some division of zoning on a single property, we have sought to avoid it. I don't think it's good practice generally, just because it has let, where you have had parcels that are split in some way in what they're zoned, it, it leads to a lot of inefficiencies and difficulty in administering that. So I think a unitary rezoning decision is best.
Any further comments, any discussion? If not, I'll declare the public hearing closed. The next item will be for the board action on the rezoning petition for six six eight Dattle Mountain Road. Any discussion from the board? Hearing none, call for a motion to approve the rezoning?
I just, I just wondered if I could comment while the landowners were here, that with the school being down there and it always being bottlenecked, I always envisioned some sort of a road going from Dattle Mountain Road down to those schools to alleviate traffic, so just to put that out there, I think it may be too steep, but an access road from Dattle Mountain Road to the schools would be good for that whole community.
Okay, any further comment from the board? If not, someone want to make a motion to...
Move to approve.
Second.
All, any further discussion? All in favor? Mike, okay, Mike's there, good. Okay, I had no one sign up for the public comment session, so did I miss anybody by any chance? If not, we'll move on. All business, discussion on Town of Franklin leave share policy. Madam Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, what you have for you tonight is a policy we had worked on last month. We took it to ordinance review and just introduced it to council at our September meeting. We ran it through ordinance review again, and we put it in your agenda packet, and I'm just going to highlight some of the big points, and Mr. Horton, we appreciate your input. Tried to look at the liability that vacation holds, so we've taken your advice and added that in there. So this would be an amendment to your current personnel policy, because in your current personnel policy, it forbids any type of leave sharing, it explicitly states you cannot do that. It's some time ago, probably ten or fifteen years ago, the Town of Franklin did have such a policy, and then when the current personnel policy was adopted, that was left out. So we've looked at, want to bring it to the board, because that has seemed to be a trend, really in the past couple of years of employees, you know, where they're getting into a situation to where they have had an injury or impairment, and you've had employees wanting to donate time, so real quick, what this section looks like, it says employees may transfer available vacation leave to another employee to use as sick leave. This is only allowed under specific circumstances when the receiving employee has depleted all available leave. The town manager and human resource officer shall determine the amount of leave an employee may receive, if any. An employee shall not receive in any donations a total of more than two hundred and forty hours of donated vacation leave. Leave may only be donated in increments of eight hours. Employees qualifying to receive donated leave must meet the following criteria: the employee suffers from an illness, injury, impairment, or physical or mental condition which is of an extraordinary or severe nature, and which is caused or is likely to cause the employee to, A, go on leave without pay status, so meaning they have to deplete all their vacation and sick to where they're at risk of actually being, they may be on FMLA to where they're actually going to start being on FMLA without pay, because they've depleted all that. Termination, town employment, and the employee's absence and use of shared leave are justified. The employee has depleted all sick vacation and comp leave, and the employee has abided by all personnel rules regarding sick leave use. It is the responsibility of both parties to be familiar with the Town of Franklin's personnel policy in regards to proper use of sick leave, accumulated sick leave's effect on retirement, and the guidelines of the Family Medical Leave Act. And then on the second page, it's basically, this is what the amendment to your personnel policy would look like. The second page is actually a check and balance that we included in the agenda package. It actually takes the approval of the employee that's wanting to donate it, the department head, and human resources, or the town manager. So we have vetted this process quite a bit to make sure there's plenty of checks and balances. So with that, I'll open that up to any questions from council.
Mr. Mayor, I looked at the old policy, and it was, the manager's right, absolutely, did not allow any transfer of leave at all, period, which is surprising to me, because most municipalities and local governments in the past decade have adopted a shared leave policy like this, if not identical to this, where one employee can donate annual leave to another employee when they're out due to illness and with them or their family. So I'd just like to say, I think the town manager and the staff have done a good job putting this together, and it seems like it's a very well thought out plan, and I would hope that the board would consider approving that.
Thank you, Chuck. Anybody want to comment on the board?
Is this...
Yes, Mike, go ahead.
Is this, whether to donate sick leave or vacation time? There was some, there was some discrepancy last meeting talking about between vacation time and sick leave.
This would only be vacation, we've amended it to reflect only vacation, because that also is a benefit of the municipality, because it would decrease the municipality's liability of carrying excessive vacation for employees. So this would only be able, an employee could only transfer vacation to an employee, wouldn't, they couldn't transfer their sick leave.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
I think it's very good policy.
Would someone like to make a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion that we approve it as presented by the town manager, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and is there a second? We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Your business. Ms. Linda, you've got a update on our Christmas parade.
Yes, sir. I'm here to ask permission to have one, which here actually, and you should have copies of our proposal, our request to the town in your possession there. And first, before I go into that, I want to thank all of you for all that you do, the hard decisions you have to make for the wonderful town that we have here. And I've had, we've had several opportunities to take credit for the beautiful decorations in town, and we didn't. We were happy to say we didn't do that, but we, you know, appreciate the town, everybody that had a part in that, congratulations and thank y'all so much. It's absolutely beautiful here, and we've had many comments about it, and people questioning us, and we said, well, we didn't do it, but we're happy to live in the town that did, so thank y'all so much. So anyways, the only change that we really are asking for as opposed to previous years for this, we're calling it a Christmas celebration, it actually does consist of a parade, as we have done in the past, and the same setup as we've had before will be requested again this year, just to stage the parade behind the First Baptist Church down Church Street, and with the least... Sorry, that makes me so nervous. So anyway, the only difference that we're asking for really is to be able to extend the parade up on the Highlands Road, past the shopping centers and shopping areas up there, to give more space for people to distance themselves to watch the parade. And so that's the major change that we have asked for, for this year, and we have a, the press release that you have there has not been sent out, that's just to show you what we're doing and the way that we're asking. In case, the same rules are still applicable in November the twenty-ninth, that we are asking people to wear the masks, to distance, social distance, and we're working on a project right now whereby the chamber is planning to house a mask custom made that says, "Stay Safe Franklin NC," and we will be giving those out to any spectators and to all the people who participate in the parade. So we're working on some things to try to make this safe for everyone, and we just feel like that it's time to celebrate the way we've always celebrated something this year. So that's all. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
I may have missed it, you're going to extend the parade down the Highlands Road?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. When will you disband?
Well, we, we are putting in the press release that the parade will end at the Franklin Flea Market.
Oh, okay.
We're not asking people to disband there, we're hoping that, and we will encourage, and we have a set of rules that we'll give out to everybody at the entries, we will encourage them to go further up towards Bylow and on past into that vacant lot, the ones to the Vanderwoods, we'll be asking for permission for people to disband there if they need to. A lot of people probably just go on out and, you know, take their floats or their cars, and a lot of people are actually in cars or trucks or something like that, so we, we'll be encouraging them to continue on beyond the flea market and try to find a safe place to disband.
So where will it start? You say Church Street.
It starts right here. We, we start lining up off of Harrison Avenue, Church Street, all the way down, behind everything and through this parking lot, pull out right here.
And so they'll be going down Main Street?
Down Main Street again, and down Porter Street to Palmer, then down Palmer, all the way to the Highlands Road.
Is that not inviting a whole lot of gathering?
Of what?
Is that not inviting just a whole lot of close gathering? I mean, that's, I mean, is, isn't that the issue as to whether or not it'd be safe with the COVID? Is that not what we're, the only reason that we would be considering not having one?
I don't think it would be our decision, really, I think it'd be up the chamber.
Oh, I think that it'd be, I think they would honor, I mean, they're coming here to ask our permission.
Yeah.
And I just want, you know, I just want to know how the board feels about it. It looks like it'd be very hard to keep any type of organization, especially on Main Street and all, I mean...
I think we were going to rely on the chamber in their literature that they're going to spread out to say, this is a much extended route, don't crowd on Main Street. That's what I got.
Yes, sir, and also, if I understand the rules correctly, which I don't always understand the rules, because they keep kind of changing a little bit along the way, however, I think that the rules state either you wear a mask or you stay six feet apart, so...
Would this be allowable under the rules from Romney right now?
According to Warren K., yes.
According to Warren?
He read all the information, we called him and talked to him, and he said, I don't see anything in the information that I've got that should prevent a parade, you know, this celebration from happening.
Any other questions?
We're in phase three, right? Didn't that come down to five? I don't know if that changes parades or anything, but I mean, we are in the further stages of...
Hopefully, we'll stay there.
Or, and what it says is twenty, mass gathering limit remains at twenty-five indoors and fifty outdoors, but I don't know whether, you know, if you spaced, it, as you pointed out last time we met and talked about this, it's hard to define where's, where's your gathering, I mean, I don't think, you know, if you happen to have seventy-five people who are just walking down the street on Main Street and all the way down to the Highlands Road, you'd say they were gathered together in any one place, so, you know, it's hard to say that that's a, whether or not that's anything. So, you know, it's hard to say that that's a, whether or not that's anything.
Spread out, that route is about a mile and a half, probably a mile and three quarters.
Oh, yeah, there's plenty of room to spread out. Plenty of room. The question is, will they? And we don't know that, I guess.
Yeah, we don't.
A lot can happen between now and the 29th of November, too. So I've noticed over the years, it is, it used to be concentrated just on Main Street, but it is, it is slowly just.
It's all the way.
Well, you're making more area to do.
We'll be staging here.
Donna has a question.
What would make it any different than how we did about our fireworks? I mean, I know it wasn't considered a parade, but we had, is it really any different than people sitting all over town watching the fireworks? Is just a question.
Oh, it's different. It's a moving thing versus the fireworks, which is pretty much stationary.
We had a large concentration of people in town.
The only answer is.
On Main Street.
And was that good?
Pardon?
Was that good? And I'm just trying to figure out, we got to be consistent, and we got to follow, you know, the.
Well, we can use math. Do we have a estimate of how many people attend the parade? 1,500?
We don't because it's so scattered. I mean, you know, it starts on Main Street, goes all the way around. There's people all the way on both sides of the street, every direction that they go. And that's why we're not encouraging people to all gather in one spot. That's the beauty of this, is that it's extended out.
Oh, there's plenty of room to spread out.
There's plenty of room for people to spread out. And I don't know, I.
And I have to guess, if you're going to do this kind of thing, I mean, my, the degree on my wall doesn't say epidemiologist, but I'm just guessing that they would say, have it in a smaller area where people are more likely to be confined is less preferable. Then it'd be, it'd be better to say, take that thing and spread it out over, you know, two or three times as long, like they're trying to do, to give it that space.
If it's 1,500 people, and it's a mile and a half, that's 1,000 people per mile, that's less than one person per foot, right? Well, that's one person to be five feet, 5,280 a mile. So one person per five feet, if those numbers are right.
And people who live together and come together don't scatter out when they get all their calls.
Right, that's.
And you know, so that's another thing to look at, is that they're, they're going to be together wherever they are.
Probably is risk, more risky to go to Walmart than it would be to watch the Christmas parade.
And it could be a bitter cold day, too.
It could be. You know, it could be raining, you never know.
It could be, yeah.
I mean, if we believe, and I don't have any reason to doubt if Warren has looked at it, if it conforms with what we're getting from Raleigh, I don't have a problem with it. It might take a little bit of suggesting people fan out along the way, you know, to make sure that we don't get the big mall right there on Main Street or whatever. And obviously, the ones involved in the parade are going to have to keep their distance, too. But you thought about that by having them stagger, and not all land in the same pool at the end.
The participants is not a big problem. It's the spectators is, would be the only concern as to how well they follow the rules. But it's, where, did you happen to be in town Saturday, downtown Saturday? There was a lot of people. There's a lot of people in the downtown area, regardless of whether there was anything, a parade or anything else going on. But nevertheless, it's, and we intend to put a station in front of the town hall up here where we're giving away those masks. We're going to put a station over on the Highlands Road in front of City Plumbing and Electric, another station there for people to pick them up, and then we're putting it out there that they can pick them up at the chamber prior to the parade.
Well, I'll say, Linda, you're right. I was down here Saturday, and it looked like the Fourth of July.
I was just going to say, the biggest problem is that, you know, people come early, and they hang around and talk and, for a long time, and then slowly disperse. They were just there for the parade, no problem, because it's, you know, not going to be that many minutes that it goes by in front of them. But my experience is, they come really early, and they're all sitting in chairs and.
And it seems that in the last couple, few years, and the weather has a lot to do with it, depending on the weather always, which we can't, none of us control, but it seems that people have waited longer to come into town in the last few years. I don't know why, but they.
Well, maybe not having walkers in the parade will change the character of it also.
Okay. Anybody else?
No, we're asking, nobody.
What about waiting around for Santa Claus at the end? Is that going to be part of it?
I didn't understand the question.
A Santa Claus? I know that it doesn't.
Santa Claus will still be at the end.
They could just come by in the last car?
Yeah.
On the last fire truck.
We already got the float for him.
Okay.
So I really appreciate Chamber Commerce doing this and having a Christmas parade. I think that's, that's a nice thing to have in our town. I have some fond memories in the past of our Christmas parades here, and one of them is, one year, they talked me into being Santa Claus on that, on that fire truck. This is the last thing to go down the street, and I was sitting up there behind the courthouse, freezing to death, and Ms. Patty McClure, who we lost this week, was at the microphone reading, and I thought I was going to freeze to death before Ms. Patty got through with her recitation. But we had a great time, and I was honored a few years ago when I was asked to be the grand marshal. So I think it's a great thing for Franklin to have, and I appreciate the work that goes into putting this together. Thank you, Linda, and thank the Chamber for doing that.
And you'll see by the press release what we're doing, we're not having just one person as the grand marshal. We're actually not having people had, you know, it's really, we're still working out the details, but what we wanted to do was honor and recognize and thank all of our law enforcement, our emergency and medical personnel, educators, and all essential workers. This has been a difficult year for everyone, and especially for some of those folks.
Well, let's not forget, it's the kickoff of the retail holiday shopping season, and air war business owners, merchants have suffered enough, we certainly don't need any other reason to, I think, I mean, the parade is always basically, that's, am I wrong, Linda? That usually, we're saying that's the kickoff of the holiday shopping season, am I wrong?
You're right, Mike. That is correct. We try to use that as kind of the beginning, and I know the town, we don't know what the town's going to do. I guess y'all are still in discussion on some of the things, but the tree lighting and different things that go on around that certain date. So we appreciate y'all's consideration, and if we can do it, we'll do it. If we can't, we'll stay home, enjoy it, and fine.
Thank you, Linda. Appreciate it so much. Okay, discussion on Town of Franklin bereavement policy. Madam Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. We need some definitive action on that, I think.
I don't think this is for discussion. There was no motion.
There was no motion on that.
Was there requesting a street closure?
No, there's street closures involved.
Well, that goes, oh, well, somebody want to make a motion to allow the street?
Make a motion, we'll allow the street closure for the Christmas parade if it's able to go on.
I second that.
All right. All in, is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. All right, now we'll go to the bereavement policy.
Mr. Mayor and Council, and this is for discussion, certainly just get some feedback from the board, and we can revisit this next month as well. We ran this through Ordinance Review, ran it through there again today. Again, your current Town of Franklin policy, there is no bereavement policy, meaning currently, if an employee has a death in their family, immediate family, they're required to take sick or vacation leave for that. One of the things we've ran into and noticed the last, really the last couple of years is this could be a really powerful recruitment tool for new employees, because you have, we've had several circumstances to where some of our new employees who maybe do not have enough time for sick or vacation, they've just started with this, because in order to get 40 hours of vacation, you have to be employed with the Town of Franklin for one full year. So there have been cases where those employees who are new, they do not have that time, and they've actually had to go without pay because they've had a member in their immediate family pass away. So I'm not going to read through this with you guys unless you would like me to, but wanted to get some thoughts from the board. Again, this is something for discussion. You're welcome to vote on it for tonight. We're not looking for that. We'll be glad to bring it back next month. But just, you know, one of the things we've been charged with this year, our goal was really to take an in-depth view of our personnel policy, and this is another one that seems to be coming up quite a bit, just specifically for your new employees who don't have that sick or vacation, because again, the way the Town of Franklin's sick leave policy is, you get eight hours per month. So there has some circumstances where new employees have had to go without pay because they've had a tragic loss in their family. So just opening it up for discussion.
I have a quick question. Now, I may have missed it. If we vote for this, will it go into effect immediately?
That would, that would be up to you and the board.
Okay, so that needs to be, if we go for it, it needs to be said when it's going to go into effect?
Yeah, it would just be an amendment to your current personnel policy.
Yes, Mrs. Gray.
I do think it's a powerful tool, and speaking from personal experience, you know, people aren't really that able to do much if they've just suffered a tragic loss. And so you can help them, but also it's just makes sense for them not to have to come in and worry about work in a time like that.
Okay, so anyone want to make a motion? Whether we adopt this is presented.
I'm going that we adopt.
All right, have a motion? You second, I have a second from Donna. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mike, okay?
Thank you, Council.
Okay, COVID-19 expenditure, Madam Manager.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm actually going to defer this to Mr. Nathaniel Moore and Police Chief Bill Harold, if they want to come up. We've got some ideas. This is a COVID-related expenditure. Councilmember Collins actually had a really good idea, explore possibilities of some electronic messaging signage for COVID-related expenditures. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to these gentlemen to present to Mayor and Council what they've been able to find.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. Last month, we had COVID expenditures and some things that we've put in place to protect our employees and outside vendors as well. One of the ideas was having some changeable message signs that we had put in those expenditures, and as Council wanted to look at some other options as well that are out there, what I'm familiar with are the signs you shouldn't see in all the construction projects. So that's at first what we had looked at about purchasing in that line item, and there was some discussion on what else was out there. So probably the easiest thing, and you have your packet, the two, the two main options, the orange-style sign, everybody should be now familiar with during all the construction that we see all over, is your regular DOT-style message sign. And the other packet is a more, I'd almost say like a large TV-style sign. It's a color display. You can do video on it. There are a lot of options with those style signs. I wasn't familiar with, and we did some research, those are still a traffic rated signs, and somebody going down the road, if we did set them out, throw something at it, it will survive like the regular CMS signs are. They are, depending on the sizing, somewhat more expensive. So just to put it in perspective of size, what's your typical sign that you're used to seeing is roughly six foot by 12 foot. And we've got three, all three sign sizes in your packet there and pricing for those as well. Now, I do have kind of a short video here that shows these style. We reached out to this company, and they sent some information over to us, so it would probably do a better job than me speaking.
And just to inform Mayor and Council, the product that you're seeing is the ones listed in the packet, and it's basically a turnkey operation. So what you see as far as the trailer, everything comes with this packet. It also comes with a generator, correct?
That's it. So these are turnkey mobile sign systems that we can provide information for COVID-related information out there to the public on.
And as far as timeframe, I know that was a discussion we had had last month. The turnaround, if the board decided to go for this style of signage, if you placed an order, I believe by the 10th of October, it is ready and delivered to the town by November the 10th.
So we could use it for the Christmas parade. Please distance yourself.
And the biggest thing I know that these expenditures we need to have in by the end of the year, so whatever stall that this Council would like to go with, we would be able to get those expenditures in hand and delivered by that timeframe.
So let's kind of talk about cost, because I know that's the other discussion point. So for your basic sign that we all see that are a dime a dozen, that DOT has, for that style, is what per sign?
Roughly 15,000 to 18,000, depending on options that we would get with that.
And they're very limited, as you can see. However, with this style signage, they're a little bit more, what's there but not terrible? What's their cost per sign for the ones you've displayed?
So roughly, if you look at your packet, you have the, of course, the entry level is a four by six, it is a smaller sign, but they've quoted right at 23,000 per sign, and we had reached out to the vendors, and I believe they could get that price if we were looking at two of them for under that 40,000 mark.
We just, it's almost to me like watching Atari back in 1980, playing pawn with that black, with that orange and black versus a TV screen. Now, what I had in mind is this, one bigger than four by six. I saw one that was 12 by seven. That was more expensive. We hadn't priced it all out, but here's my thought. We could use it out on the road from time to time. It would probably be stationary somewhere, maybe on our property, advertising the upcoming events. I could see the chamber. I could see all kinds of different groups wanting to get space on it. But if we had the trailer and the generator there, I bet you you could get one of those signs that we're talking about a whole lot less than, because we'd already have the trailer and, you know, and just adapt it on it. To me, we would never, as a town, buy a nice color screen for our purposes, showing the blood drive, showing things coming up, time and temperature, keep distancing. We'd never do it in our budget, but if we have $40,000, now's the time to do it. We generally can borrow the signs that we're talking about from the DOT when they're available. They're not available on every occasion, and I get, and it's never come up in all the years I've been on the board, and I've never really asked for one. I don't doubt that they need them, but this is an opportunity, folks, for us to get something that we would never otherwise have the ability to do it, and I think, used right, it would be a promotional tool that we would find, that we wonder how we ever did without one. And so, I mean, the question is, I don't know whether we need to try to just vote on two four by sixes right now tonight, but if we've got some time at all to figure out what's the best use of that 40,000, and in me, if we got to go over 40,000 for a few dollars to get what we want, we won't get no better opportunity to do that. But I don't want to see us invest in that monochromatic things whenever for about the same money, you can get a colored TV.
In the back page, Mr. Collins, we priced out as well from the same company, basically the same size, a six by 12 as well, so it's listed in there also.
And what was that cost? Is it the 33?
Yes, right at 34,000 for the large, larger style.
Well, I'm with Joe then.
I think, I think that's a good point that Joe was making. The only question I would have is, these things are really nice, what happens if something happens to it? What about maintenance? How are you going to take care of it? How are you going to take care of it? How are you going to fix it if something goes wrong with it?
So this company we did reach out to, they have a 10-year warranty on their hard parts and software in the systems. And I believe it would be just like our other trailer vehicles, we would put this on our insurance if someone crosses the line and completely destroys it. It's on our insurance to be replaced.
Okay.
What about the possibility of, what about the possibility of making it look more like a static sign? In other words, you build some structure that you pull this thing behind and it, you don't see the wheels and the tires and all the other junk. But when you need it, you just go up to it and pull it somewhere. Is that kind of what you're talking about, Joe?
What I'm talking about is, you know, it comes with the trailer, it comes with the generator. I expect we would find a permanent spot for it and build a structure for it there.
Yeah, that would make it look more like a static sign.
Yes, because I think that was where we would get the most bang for our buck.
But then, of course, if we needed it to be mobile, it would be mobile.
That's right. Or if we wanted to get, find just another sign of the dot matrix type that we could, our men could fashion to use on that trailer and generator that we're really not using because the color was, is sitting there, it was a permanent place. That would not be a terribly hard investment, and I think that would be very doable. It's just the opportunity to get something in our inventory way above and beyond the dot matrix signs that otherwise we would be investing in, which are useful. But again, I understand that we, as long as the DOT doesn't have a special event, a lot of times we can get those, you know, on the, on the loan, so to speak. I just don't want us to pass up the opportunity to get something real nice.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it $40,000 that we are, have to spend, or is there a possibility of going over?
So what you have, and we've talked about this as well, I know Mr. Collins and I have, what you have built into the COVID-19 expenditure, and Ms. Bishop and I have been working with the county on this expense, they have referred us back to the guidelines of the CARES Act funding, which we feel certain this should meet. But what we have budgeted for CARES Act funding would only be $40,000. So if the town council did want to do, you know, if you did the one large sign, as suggested you have at the $33,000, if you wanted to do two larger ones at that, we would need to look at taking some additional funding from your fund balance, knowing that that wouldn't be, that couldn't be reimbursed. However, you currently do have $40,000 available that should be reimbursed for this expenditure.
Because you said, Nathaniel, that the one that was the $22,987, they would do two for 40?
I believe, I've got an email, yeah, late this evening that said that they should be able to do with a municipal discount, close to that. Now, that probably doesn't include shipping and some other things, but...
So you'd get a discount, obviously, if you were on the bigger one, but you don't get it?
I'd consider, I'd consider that $33,000 and then a $15,000 one. That's your dot matrix? That's the one that, is that about how much they are?
That's a good point.
That's $48,000, that's $8,000 more. But we've got, we've got real versatility then, that we can, we'd have two of them on trailers, one of them big enough to really make an impact, maybe for the movies. I don't know if it'd be big enough for a, probably not movies. But I envision that it would be a, I mean, I, I could see us doing something like that. Now, they don't have sound, though, do they?
Uh, no, they do not have sound.
So that rule out the movies, yeah? Well, no, we've got our speaker systems and stuff you plug in. I mean, it's like, it's a monitor.
They, they're, these have the capability to show movies through Wi-Fi and some ethernet connections. I'm sure you just have to have a mobile sound device for them.
Yeah.
How big is the one for $33,000?
Uh, that's the exact size that, like your dot matrix stall is, that you see on the sign.
Six by 12?
Six by 12, yep.
That's, that's, that's big enough for an impact.
Yeah.
And you just, with your phone and stuff, you can just calibrate what?
Yeah.
What it shows, yeah.
Can they be hacked?
That's a good question.
I'd have to refer to our IT director for that.
Oh, man. For $8,000, you get one of each?
I think that's a good idea, Joe. Do you need a motion?
Yeah, if we could get a motion for, so let me just clarify for accounting purposes. You want to do the large one, the $33,899, $82, that's the six-by-12?
Yes.
Get a large one of those, and then the rest of the expenditure would be for a smaller one.
A smaller dot, I'm saying dot matrix, because you, you all know, I mean, just the, the standard one, the $15,000?
Just the basic.
The orange and black?
Yeah.
And what I would recommend, since that's more of a construction, the remaining balance of that difference come out of retained earnings, water, and sewer. That way, because that's an appropriate expenditure of retained earnings, because water and sewer department will use that standard signage more than the police or general fund. So that would be my recommendation by Vice Mayor.
Do we expect to pay sales tax on top of this?
So we...
You'd get it back.
They'd get it back, it's reimbursed.
Okay. And I, I assume that if we authorize this amount of money, y'all are still going to try to negotiate with them and get the price down or so? And I, I would guess that both of these companies would be receptive to the idea of at least a 10% discount or something like that. So do whatever you got to do to try to save us some money.
And in light of that, it may not even go as high as what? Because that's what I was thinking when I was calculating before. Did somebody make a motion?
No, no.
Mrs. Vice Mayor?
Did, I would second it.
Okay.
Okay. So you want to restate your motion to include what the manager?
We empower our management to make this purchase of the two signs, the large sign and the smaller digital-type sign. And whatever budgetary appropriations you have to make.
Right, y'all.
Thank you.
Okay, now, do I have a second?
Donna, second.
I second. I don't, I will, I don't think they're, they're the same size at this point, are they?
No.
One is very big in color, one is kind of big in black and white, or yellow and black.
I thought that was six-by-12, and we were doing six-by-12 on the other.
They are. They're very similar.
It's, and I only said that because when she said the smaller.
Gotcha, I'm sorry.
No.
I recited that, yeah, you're right.
So I was seconding that they're the same size.
Yeah, right.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. All right, we heard you, Mike. Thank you. Discussion on street closing the streets of Franklin. Ms. Taylor, welcome.
If I may start off, just from the merchants on Main Street, we certainly appreciate the way everything downtown looks. There has been so many comments, and so many people taking pictures and families, those probably, I mean, and they are safe distancing. I watched that yesterday. They're wearing their masks, then they'll take them off and take their pictures and put them back on. So I just want to thank the council, appreciate that, that has helped the merchants. There has been a lot of people downtown, and we appreciate that. And the business is really good, so thank y'all.
Thank you for your work. Ms. Taylor and her husband, actually, kudos go to them as well. They have been instrumental in helping with the design and layout of that display. So really and truly, thank you guys for your artistic ability on that.
Thank y'all.
That's your truck?
It was a team effort, so, so it was a team effort, so we did good.
Wonder on that topic, can I just ask you a question? I'm supposed to have for the jury Thanksgiving, because y'all got every pumpkin on the East Coast.
I come to you tonight on behalf of the merchants, that we are looking for Halloween. I have done some research, listened to Mandy Cohen stating that North Carolina is not, in North Carolina, Halloween is not canceled, that they did recommend outdoor activities and not the indoor, and going to house to house. And that's what we, as merchants on Main Street, are looking at, is having on October 31st, and we are calling it hometown spirit of fall, whether it's a rural spirit or whether it's a, just a happy spirit of fall. But we are going to start at 10 o'clock that morning on our Main Street, on our sidewalk, like we've been doing since September. And we've been having local crafters throughout, every Saturday. We're going to open it up to nonprofits on the sidewalk. And then we are going to have, starting at 3 o'clock, which is teal pumpkin. Brittany Lochtoss does teal pumpkin, and this is for children that have health or food allergies. This has always been done inside the store, where they come in to get some type of item, whether it's a pencil, an eraser, or whatever, it's a non-food product for those children having those allergies. And then we are asking, and we've got Plan A, B, and C, or D, or E, or F, or whatever we need to do, that we are asking to close the streets at 3 o'clock with a possible trunk or treat. If we could get families, or churches, or somebody to decorate a trunk and give out candy safely, it's not going to be grabbed, it's not, it will be handed out. We are with request, possibly even be put in little single-serving type bags. They would wear their masks, they would wear gloves to make it safe. But the reason why we're asking to close the street is for the safety of the children, because they will be coming downtown, and we'll start that at 4 o'clock, and we'll go on to 4 to 7. We would like to have a masquerade, and that being where you could decorate your masks, can just come downtown, and just make it a happy, fun time. That's option A. Please let me go into option B. Option B, thinking, knowing that having people come and have, you know, their vehicles parked on Main Street and handing out candy that way, we went a step farther and said, if we could close the street, and if we could have these churches, community people, whoever, that would come and sit in front of our stores and hand out candy in front of our stores, but still have the street closed, and just start right here at the top of the hill, go to Iowa Interstate and stop, not go through for that timeframe, so it would still be safe for people to come out, take pictures, pictures out in the gazebo area. We would still hand out candy in a safe manner, and then streets would open back up. And then our option C is we do understand that we want to be safe. We do understand that we want to make sure that everybody has masks, and, but children love to get dressed up. So if our next option would be to go have decorated tables, there again, in front of our stores, and we would hand out the candy that way, and not close the street if we felt like the street did not need to be closed. We were just asking to close the street so it'd be safe for the kids, so they could get out and walk around and not be jumbled up on the sidewalk, and there would be a little bit of open space for them to be able to do that. That's, that's our request.
Chief Harrell, could, rather than closing the street, could we not put a presence that would slow everything down and maybe put it into one lane instead of two lanes, so that you've got a center lane going down?
We can do that.
I was, I was always told it was a state highway and you couldn't restrict it to one lane. That's what they used to tell me, and I believed it. They said it was a state highway, and you cannot restrict it down to one lane.
We can request it. We can request it, and then make them know that it'd be up to DOT to give us that authorization.
Well, after it's over with, can we get permission yet? I mean, I don't, I don't know. Have we ever, I don't remember ever doing that, Joe. Really haven't. I remember us inquiring as to whether... I was thinking, wasn't that about though, doing it on a permanent one-lane basis? It probably was. I think that's what I remember. And so I'm not trying to... Could you live with that, Lynn?
My, my concern would be the safety of the children if they want to cross back and forth to, across the street. If, and if you decided not, would close the street and thus not do a trunk or treat, and people decorate their trunks, and just have tables on the sidewalk, by closing the street and having tables on the sidewalk, that's going to give us an expansion of space, because this will be a walk and go. This won't be a stop and talk. This will be a walk and go, give the children a treat and go on. But they would have that opportunity to be in the street, not go confined to that small area on each side of the sidewalk, because you may have a child that darts out in the street. Safety is, that's, and I'm sure the chief is as well, the safety is the most important thing for our children. So by us having that street closed for that, small at the time, and then that way, that can get out. And we won't do the trunk, we'll, we'll do decorate tables. We just want to do something.
I agree with Ms. Taylor. I'm very concerned that we, if we didn't close it. And I guess my thought is, it allows more social distance space. It's safer, and we're not having pumpkin fest, and we close the street down for the whole day, that for a few hours. That's my opinion, that it would be much safer.
Chief Harrell, can you reroute the traffic up around the hospital and back?
Sure.
Okay. That's what we'd have to do.
They've got it to go through.
Yeah, they've got, we have access right here to go around this building.
Let me throw something in on that. That road doesn't handle a lot of traffic, it can't. And also, we need this parking lot for parking of event that's going to be of this size. You're going to need all the parking you can get. And if we can go ahead like we do, we're pretty used to it, routing the traffic around, and that takes care of... Yes, sir. Well, I mean, we're just here talking, but I made that argument for years running around the country here, and I'm not sure, but it's not a winning argument, I never have won on it yet. But answer, I'm the devil's advocate, answer the COVID question, because I have to assume it's going to be the fall, the fall, winter flu season as well, as we're spiking up our deputies, or, or, a lot of them have it, the lawyers have it, and it's really spreading around. Is it something that would, would it be a spreader?
I'm not a doctor, I don't know.
I don't either.
I can't answer that, but I can tell you that we're going to give candy out to our children, we just want to do it in the safest way, because they're going to come downtown. And the merchants have been hit so hard. And if we're giving back, that's going to help us in the months that we need for our local folks to come downtown. But we're going to do it in a safe way. We're going to have gloves on our hands if we're handing out candy. We're going to have our mask on.
Are the kids going to have their mask on and gloves on their hands?
Well, I don't know about gloves on the kids' hands, but they're going to have their postives and their outfits. They're going to need to have a mask on.
Can you, can you simplify it all and run the traffic around the hospital, which we are accustomed to doing?
Yes, sir.
The only time I think that we ever do really open that back gate for any particular thing is the Christmas parade, primarily.
Yes, sir.
And you're going to have a bottleneck. There is a bottleneck there, and we found that out on other events. So now, as far as what Mr. Collins is talking about, the spreading, that's... That's my question of the board. I mean, how, how do we, how do we address that? I don't know.
That aren't, I mean, really, they're going to, they, they can do what they want to do, whether we tell them or not, they're just saying...
We can't close the street.
Can't close the street. I think we're making it safer if we close the street, because if we don't close the street, they're all going to be on the sidewalks more in a...
Closer together.
But I mean, they're going to have it because they're not subject to that.
Lynn, what time do you plan?
Um, if we could have the street closed at 4 and then back up at 7.
My recommendation would be we close it.
Well, I think that if we're going to have it, I prefer to close the street. I just want to hear, if we feel like it's something, would it fit with Raleigh? Would Raleigh say we could do this?
Well, we're not doing. They're going to do it. We're here for the town, they're not.
We'd be closing, we'd be closing the street, so we'd be doing it.
Well, we're expecting an influx of people by us closing the street. Are we being responsible by giving more space for social distancing? I mean, we are kind of advocating for more people to come downtown, but we're also allowing for much more safer social distancing.
I agree with that.
I mean, that's where I was going, that they're going to do it whether we say it's okay. okay, it's just a street party.
And it's better to have kids on the sidewalk getting candy than all the way at the back of the building getting candy. I mean, then you've got a bunch of kids inside.
Right, and that's what we try not to do, kids to come inside our stores, not that we don't appreciate it, but that way they'll be outside, they're walking, and be going from place to place.
What are you going to do about parking? Are you going to have us remove all the parking on Main Street?
The only thing about that is if somebody has parked and, you know, after a certain hour, like we do with some of the other events, is not be able to park on Main Street. And people would need to have their cars moved, because if they want to leave, you know, if they come and are shopping downtown, then that's something that we have to work out like any other event that we do.
And Vice Mayor and Council, if I may, real quick, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor McGray. We do have signage, like what we put out for the tree lighting ceremony that says all vehicles off Main Street by like 3:30, so, I mean, we do have a possibility to work with them on that.
Yeah.
Well, I think if we use the media, maybe, maybe give them some money for advertising or something, but just really make a big push that we want you to come, but please, these are the rules, we want everyone to, I mean, just drill it into them.
Yeah, masking and social distancing are two things that need to be spoken frequently by the chamber, the streets, and by the town.
Yes.
Well, I think it's commendable that our downtown merchants are taking the initiative to do this and think about other people, and it's also a way, a small way, that we can show our support for our downtown merchants by supporting them by closing the street and allowing this for the short period of time. They're hurting, they're hurting for business. And Walmart's not hurting for business, but our small merchants are hurting for business, and we need to take an opportunity when we have it to support them and what they're trying to do, encourage and build their business.
Just curious, I mean, how much does it empty out around 5 o'clock, from so much of the parking on Back Street for the businesses on Back Street? Does it empty out pretty quick around 5?
It starts filling up, actually, Joe, because of the restaurants. On Saturday, after 5 o'clock, it's, it's getting hard to find a parking lot.
So this is going to, I missed what day of the week this was going to be on.
So Saturday. And I'm spoken with the restaurants, Rock and Roll, he's fine, Root and Barrel's fine.
But they do, it's, it's amazing, there's a little lull there around 5 o'clock, and then it just starts building again. And this parking lot is, is pretty vital to your special events, it gets filled up pretty good. And Chief Harrell, y'all can handle the rerouting the traffic like we always do?
I would recommend this kind of case in point on the message boards that we're talking about, we would try to rent some, or rather borrow some from DOT to put out here that parking needs to be eliminated after a certain hour, if canceled, besides move forward with this project.
Vice Mayor, in light of the fact that the chief said he could handle the traffic situation, and we can do this small thing to help our downtown merchants, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the street closure for the short period of time to allow this event.
With the traffic rerouting? Okay.
Mike second.
Okay, Mike, I hear you, okay. All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, Ms. Taylor, go for it.
Thank you.
All right, that pretty well takes care of the agenda tonight, unless...
Maybe one more thing, Mr. Mayor.
I thought that we would not...
There are more tariffs. I slipped another one in on you. There's a property, 125 Yerman Terrace.
Oh, yeah.
They're for more than a year now, have been some nuisance conditions on that property. Town administration has done everything they can to try to get voluntary compliance and get it cleaned up, it's resulted in a lot of complaints from neighbors. I wanted, I have, was on the verge of having a lawsuit filed for it to go along and be filed with a minimum housing complaint you've already authorized me to file, but then I thought, I'm not going to go file something in your name and not have you know about it, endorse it, direct me to do it. So that's what I'm asking you to do, is for the council to give you your authorization to go ahead and file a complaint that is to simply require that homeowner who gets the property get into compliance with your nuisance ordinance.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just going to make the motion.
Bring it on.
And I'll second.
All right, motion and a second to allow council to proceed. All in favor?
Aye.
All right? Okay, that's going around the table, see if anybody, Madam Manager, you have anything to add?
No, sir, thank you.
Counselor?
No.
Mr. Horton?
Norton, did you say?
Horton!
Okay. I don't really have anything, but I would just like to echo what we said earlier, that the town really looks good.
Thank you.
Decorations up for the fall, and I think, I think it speaks well for our town staff, the manager, the folks, and all the folks that volunteered to help put that together, because absolutely, it's one of the prettiest ones I've seen in all the towns around here, so I appreciate that.
And I'll echo that, and people have told me I had to tell you all how much they appreciate. So I think, you know, our citizens, everyone recognizes that it's outstanding, it's really outstanding.
I'm the same. I came through yesterday, and there was quite the crowd, and every little part enjoying it, so.
Ms. Collins?
Yeah, people who don't even like the town government or like us are, we have killed them with the joy of the decorations. I mean, they're, they're blown away with it, so, kudos to y'all, that was really, I mean, I knew you were going to go big, but that was, it's good.
And I will add, I know Mr. Moore and Mr. Waldrup did a lot of research on a few designs and, before the decorations began, so I'd like to thank them too.
Ms. Collins?
Same here, have we got any activity with the Board of Education on the distance line and making this space available?
So what we have so far, and I'm actually going to call on our IT director, so we've actually started, do you want to talk about the Wi-Fi access you have available? And then, John, I'm going to defer to you, because we have opened up that communication with Dr. Baldwin, but we have started to make some progress our end. I'm going to have to defer to the school board on that, because I've not heard back from them.
So after last month, we, me and our IT consultant that I use, we bought a Wi-Fi outdoor extender, it's actually in our server room right now, it's been set up and ready to be installed, we've just have got to run some wire and get it outside, get it mounted, because our Wi-Fi we have internally is just not strong enough to get out in the parking lot, so we're trying to get something, we've got something that's built for that to be outside, and it's here and ready, we just got to get everything ready, and then you'll have, if it's free Wi-Fi in the parking lot in this immediate area around town hall.
And aren't we making this room available if they want it?
And that's what we've opened it up to.
And I'll have to check back in with, I have not heard from them.
Just as long as I want to make sure that the invitation's still...
Absent.
All the security issues running down there?
As you were talking about access, it's a, the Wi-Fi is completely separate than our network, we've got it isolated, so somebody, somebody was trying to hack in, they're not going to hack in, they can't get to us, it's isolated. It's a completely different set of IP addresses.
Were you thinking about hood loads? What type of security interest you talking about, Mike?
It was?
Your security interest, was it with the Wi-Fi?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because this one will be open only during hours when staff is here, right?
Okay, sir, did you have anything you'd like to add tonight? Mr. Talon?
No, thank you.
All right, I'll finish up then. I want to put a plug in for the Wayne and Sally Cabin, if you haven't seen it, they put it into place on a foundation, and that was a work of art to see that thing, it was, it weighed 18,000 pounds. And they set it in Josh Young and a bunch of guys, some supervisors, like myself, you know, and, but it is really interesting, and I think that's going to be a real big attraction for Main Street, that cabin. It came with, furnished with all kind of antiques, which are in storage now, and it does have a coon skin, skin on the inside wall still, but the historical museum, and they, if you haven't been to the museum lately, they've got a bunch of new exhibits, and we're hearing a lot of great things about our museum. That's all I have, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Sir.
All in favor? Don't scare me, I know second.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Feel better.